Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of October 5th, 2021. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Kate is not going to be with us this evening. Her grandfather is very ill, so she will not be joining us. And Curtis Sampson is not coming this evening. So I'll start with the roll call of members present. Michael Crotto, Chair.
Kimberly Queen and Selectmen's Rep.
Ron Stevens, Member.
James Buffetti, Member.
Okay. And we have with us on the Webex, Jamin Cara from the National Regional Planning Commission, our circuit writer. Hello, Jay. All right. Before I begin the meeting, there are no alternates because we don't have any this evening. So public input on non-agenda items, are there any items not on the agenda listed for this evening that the public would wish to comment on? Okay, hearing none. I will close public input on non-agenda items. Is there someone here from UNH this evening? I got an email. No? Okay. Someone, an engineering student said that she was going to be coming to the meeting. I didn't know she was here. All right. The order of business this evening, Mel's Funway Park, 443 and 454, Charles Bancroft Highway, map 20, lots 14 and 17. Owners, Whitney Realty Trust and KBT Realty Trust. A site plan amendment to propose, adding 58 parking spaces in three locations. Add stormwater drainage, a winter light show along the existing trails where the Haunted Hayride currently lies, an outdoor laser tag arena throughout the woods where the Haunted Hayride currently lies, and a Christmas tree sales area with a children's petting zoo adjacent to the arcade building. For a more detailed review of all that is proposed on site, please see the site plan entitled Mel's Funway Site Plan Amendment. If the aforementioned application is accepted, notice is hereby extended to application, approval, consideration, and/or continuations to a date certain as required. Is the applicant present this evening? All right. Good evening. Why don't you guys come to the front of the table and introduce yourselves to the board?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pete Madsen, Project Engineer at Teach-Northstrom Associates.
Andrew Pearlman of Tunnion Pearlman. For the applicant, with us tonight is Wayne Caulfield from Mel's Funway Park. And Pete's young associate, Matt Peterson, is behind me as well.
I'm just going to get up and present if you guys don't mind.
Well, before we do that, and we do have to, first, our business would be to determine whether we want to accept the application as it has been submitted. That's normally what we do before we get into the presentation. Once we have accepted the application, if we've accepted it, then we will allow the applicant to present his case, and we'll go forward from there. So I do have to ask Joan, who's our Planning Board Administrator, do we have all required fees? Have all the butters been notified for this project? And do we have all of the required documentation that we need for an acceptance?
We have fees and butters, yes, and documentation.
Okay. And Jay, have you had an opportunity to review these documents? And would you, in your opinion, say that these documents are acceptable for completeness?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to assume there is no regional impact to this project, so I'll just put that on record, note that. So it looks as though we have a completed application. We have, I do have a bunch of waivers here this evening. I have a plan review application that was submitted by the applicant. Butters have been notified, fees have been paid appropriately, and we do have a complete set of plans for acceptance. So I'll entertain a motion from the board to accept the application as it has been submitted.
So moved.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have discussion? All right. All those in favor of the acceptance of this application, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes 400. Okay. So at this time, I will allow the applicant to give his presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right. So I'm going to walk you guys through this plan set. First, I want to start with sheet number one, our overview plan here. So I believe everyone here is fairly familiar with the two lots question here, particularly lot 17, which has the main Mel's complex on it, and lot 14 here, which is across the street, currently used for agriculture. This one is currently the Mel's main facility. The purpose of this plan is to amend and supplement the existing site plans to show the following eight items. One, a proposed paved parking lot expansion on map 20, lot 17, which would be this right here. Number two, a proposed grassed parking area on map 20 to be used as overflow parking for Mel's customers. That's represented right here. Three, a proposed grassed parking area on map 20, lot 17, to be used as overflow parking for corporate events during the summer season. That's represented as this right here. Number four, a proposed grassed parking area on map 20, lot 14, to be used as overflow customer or employee parking during Spooky World events and only during Spooky World events. That's on this, this map in 20, lot 14. Number five, a proposed winter light show along the existing trails where the Haunted Hayride currently lies. That's through here. I'll go into greater detail a little bit later on in the plan set. Number six, a proposed outdoor laser tag arena through the woods where the hayride is. I'll also cover that when we get to sheet number four or five. Number seven, a proposed Christmas tree sales area adjacent to the arcade. I know you mentioned a petting zoo. We have taken that out. No more petting zoo proposed, just a Christmas tree sales area. That's represented in here in this bubbled area. And number eight, which is a new proposition, a covered storage, tractor storage area to be used to cover the tractors for the hayride in the winter season. We're asking for two waivers from the site plan regs from section 12014 to allow temporary parking on a grassed area, cornfield. This waiver has been granted for the site in the past. And from section 121, to waive the need for a traffic study. The existing uses on site are not currently being changed. Let's say for the addition of the laser tag arena, we feel that it's not going to change the additional traffic, no additional traffic to the site. And the existing circulation throughout the site will not be changed as well. Now, I'd like to go on to sheet number two. This is just our typical existing conditions plan, show the existing conditions on both sites, the boundary for both sites. Onto sheet number three. This is our removals and demolition plan. There's not a lot going on here. Really, what we're doing is paving over this existing gravel area and removing this existing fire access roads gravel just to make way for the new paved parking. Also, we're going to relocate the existing stone dust walkway. You'll see that on the, on the site plan. Moving on, sheet number four. This is our detailed site plan for the area. So as you can see, we're proposing a 58-space paved parking lot. This is to serve as permanent parking for Mel's customer to be used during the spring and summer months. Mel's has historically had parking issues on site. A lot of people have to park off-site, and they're really hoping that this will alleviate some of the issues they've been having with the parking. They're also, we're also proposing an overflow parking area right here to act as more on-site parking, once again, to alleviate that off-site issue. This is, this is going to remain grassed right here, whereas this will be paved. And it's approximately, will hold 35 cars. That's what we've approximated. And it's, once again, it's to alleviate the need for the parking off-site, which was previously located on map 20, lot 18. Additionally, we're proposing a corporate event parking right here, so approximately 70 spaces. It will also remain grassed. And this one is, the corporate really is kind of for birthday parties, large functions, business outings or anything like that. And it will be kind of coordinated beforehand. Let's see. This is not going to be used for anything other than corporate parking. So on your typical Mel's day, you'll come in, you'll fill up these spaces in here, say that word, overfill, down to this overflow right here. This is not going to see any typical Mel's parking. This is only for corporate events, which are scheduled ahead of time. No parking there typically. All right. Moving on to, oh, excuse me, one more thing. The winter light show. So we're proposing a winter light show in which patrons will purchase a ticket to enter a queuing line, which is shown right here, these three dashed lines. They continue on to the next sheet. I'll get to that quickly. So the intent is to have flaggers set up on site. These lanes will be delineated by traffic cones. Flaggers will be directing people through the lines. They'll traverse through the light show, which is going to be better shown on sheet five here. So, actually, one right here. So this kind of, the blue highlighter shows the kind of direction of flow. So people are going to queue down in here, proceed in a single file line coming this way. Here's the start of the light show. They'll kind of work their way through the woods, through the haunts. They'll be all decorated, it'll be very nice. And it'll come out here. Now, this fork in the road, this is going to be closed off, so their only option will be to go up this way. That avoids any crossing of the wetland and just didn't want to deal with that. So turn in here, coming out, exiting the light show right about here. That brings us to the Christmas tree sales area, and the intent or the hope is that some people will drive by, see the Christmas trees, stop in, maybe, maybe buy one, maybe take a picture with Santa, something like that. But the majority of the people will probably continue past the arcade, out the site, and out the existing main driveway there. Also, I want to bring up, we're proposing this 20 by 30 birthday tent here. This is not going to be used for the Christmas season at all. This is only going to be used in the summer and spring, and it's going to be removed pretty much when Spooky World starts. So no, no conflicts with the Christmas tree sales area there. One, one other thing is this 2,000-square-foot covered tractor storage I mentioned before, just going to be a shed, really, with one side open, just to get the tractors out of the, out of the snow in the winter. And finally, we have the outdoor laser tag arena, which is going to be throughout the woods here. I've kind of highlighted the area in pink. So it's really kind of uses, encompasses the whole hayride area. The intent is to have spotters out here, kind of looking, making sure that the patrons aren't going into the wetland here, they're staying within the limits that we've shown. And also, I want to point out that previously, we had been looking at doing a paintball area in here. That's off the table. This is laser tag. People will be wearing vests, and you'll be running around, shooting them with the lasers. No projectiles, nothing like that. And the intent is really to have the laser tag arena be kind of a supplemental activity when you come to Mel's. So it'll be similar to the mini golf, the go-karts, the already laser tag that's there, and it will run at the same time as all those Mel's events and be shut down in Spooky World in the winter. So no, no issues, no conflicting issues with the other events that take place there. Now, if we'd go on to sheet number six. This is the detailed site plan for map 20, lot 14. Not a whole lot going on here. Just wanted to show the kind of delineation of the parking area right here. This, once again, will, this is used as a field right now. The intent is to roll it and clear it in the fall season and after the harvest. It'll be used for, for overflow parking for Spooky World only. It is not to be used, like the corporate event, it is not to be used for the regular summer, spring Mel's parking. It won't be used for that at all. We've also proposed this stone dust walkway here to kind of get people leaving their cars out of the way of traffic. This stone dust path will lead to a cross, across Charles Bancroft Highway, which will require a police detail to be out there. We've spoken with, with Chief Sergeant, and he's signed off on everything there. Actually, we've recently received our NHDOT driveway permit for the paved access, paved apron access right there. Moving on to sheet number seven. This is our grading and drainage plan. We're proposing a bio-retention pond for some of the runoff coming off this section of the paved drive, and we're also proposing a detention pond here with a treatment swale to handle the rest of the runoff from the paved parking area. Both systems ultimately discharge of the Merrimack River up along this way. And this afternoon, we actually received sign-off from Town Engineer Lou Karen after addressing some comments, going back and forth, everything looks okay there. And the drainage design is also currently under review by DES, and we have a Shoreland permit application out there as well. So this will get another, another couple set of eyes before it's finalized. Moving on to sheet number eight. This is the grading and drainage plan for the other lot, very minor. Really, the only thing here is just a small, small grading change along the paved driveway apron, and we're proposing to replace this broken, broken culvert that connects the two wetlands across the street there. Sheet number nine. This is our erosion control sheet, pretty typical stuff here. We just have our regular erosion control blankets proposed on three-to-one slopes and riprap apron protection, as well as perimeter controls around here, just to prevent any excess sediment from leaving the site and getting into any sensitive areas down there. Next sheet, number 10. This is our landscaping plan for the proposed paved parking area. As you can see, we have a couple, a couple shade trees proposed with some shrubs as well. Really, this is going to be behind most of the stuff right here. It's going to be very difficult to see from the site, so we've kind of tried to beautify this area back here. This area not going to be very noticeable from the site, or from the road, excuse me. Next sheet. Next four are our lighting plans, sheet 11 through 14. Mel's has been having lighting issues recently. The, the lights are old, and we've had a lighting guy come in, take a look at it, propose new fixtures. All fixtures will be full cutoff, upgraded. We don't have any spillover onto adjacent properties. I'll go through these quickly, but, like I said, everything full cutoff, all up to code now. Should be good there. And now, I'll go on to sheet number 15. This is just our site distance plan for NHDOT, just showing applicable site distance, both directions, 400 feet, no issues there. And the, the final sheets are typical construction details, I won't go through those with you guys, but if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to ask, or more than happy to answer. So, yeah, that's all, that's it. I'd like to thank you guys for your time and open it up for questions.
Oh, the corn maze.
Excuse me. One more thing. So this bubble area right up here, we're proposing, corn maze will just be regular corn grown like typical New England corn, and it's not really going to be so much a maze, it's going to be a haunt. So Mel's currently has the four haunts right now for Spooky World. This would be a fifth one, and it really would just be a natural cornfield you'd walk through, people would jump out and scare you, and that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Thank you. So you guys definitely have a lot of stuff. So it's my understanding, I mean, this site plan was, what, there were amendments approved back in July 2020? And is this going to be, are you proposing this as an amendment or a completely, a full site plan review? I guess is my question.
It would be an amendment.
Mr. Chairman, it would be a site plan amendment because you already have a site plan on record with the town. However, given the amount of what we're presenting to you, you should treat it like a full review.
Okay. Yeah, because you do have a lot of, a lot of stuff on here.
Yes.
And I think, you know, probably, I mean, the, this is just, you know, the best, probably the best way to tackle it at some point is to probably go through each one individually and review one individually so that we get, and then, you know, so that when it comes time to make, you know, whether we're going to make approvals or not, at least we have an idea of what it is that we're looking at, because there's just a lot of information in these documents. That's just my personal opinion. Jay, I just want to ask you quickly, I know, did, did you, you received these plans? When did you receive them?
So the updated plans we received Friday afternoon.
Okay. And did you, I mean, have you really had an opportunity to go through everything to review it in, in, in full?
Not fully. I did, the, as you have seen in the packet, you know, I had several comments that were sent by way of letter to the applicants, and they did, along with the amended site plans, provided response. And we also had a chance to meet with the applicants yesterday and go through. So I was satisfied that they had addressed a lot of my comments, really all of my comments, but I have not had a chance to look through the plan to the level of detail I would like.
Okay. So I guess my question is, would you need time to do that?
Yes. I mean, I think to your point, there's, there is a great deal of information here, and, you know, kind of, again, I felt that my, my points were addressed, and most of those points were related to, you know, adding some additional notes, clarifying some things on the plan, but I would definitely like the, you know, opportunity to, you know, have a chance to go through it in greater detail.
Okay. All right. So I don't know what the board, I mean, what the will of the board is, what they want to do, how they want to tackle this. Like I said, there is a lot of information. I want to see if we can try and do this in a, you know, methodical approach or try a logical approach to, to at least get through some of this stuff. But also, I want, have Jay to have the opportunity to review these documents if he hasn't really gotten into a deeper dive in them. Certainly, we have what we need for acceptance, but in terms of the application, the substance of the application, I think there needs, there may need to be some further, you know, review.
If I could just interject, Chairman. I think what would also be really helpful, because there is a great deal going on, it is a lot to digest. There are a lot of detailed notes, which do describe the different activities, the, the different parking areas, the, the timing, and I know it's a lot to read, but it's probably helpful for the board, you know, when you have a chance to go through those, to kind of get an understanding of how all these different activities interplay, because of course, they're not all happening simultaneously. So that's just, I think something that I would imagine board members are going to want to be able to, you know, grasp fully.
Another question I had too of the board, and I know it's been a while, but would anybody be interested in doing, at some point, a site walk of this, this project? I know we did one for Mel's when we, I believe it was the Haunted Hayride, a while back, but I think, I don't know if that would be helpful to the board unless the board feels that they have an idea, a good idea of this site and they don't need to do it, that's fine as well. But I just thought, in terms of, because they're proposing another event, to see what, you know, what's going to happen and to get a feel for it, just, that's just my suggestion to the board. If you guys want to do that, we can certainly do that, if it, with the permission of the applicant, of course.
I think, from my perspective, a site walk is always helpful, especially a project with this, these many parts to it. So personally, that would be helpful for me to visualize, and I'm a visual person, to be able to, to, to have somebody walk through and point to the areas would be immensely helpful for me.
Okay. How do you guys feel?
I'm fine with another site walk. I don't know if you would like to attend as well, our new building inspector, just to get familiar with the site. He can take that opportunity, not that you can't already. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I mean, we would notify butters and all that, and we would, everyone would be able to attend, so. But I think it might be helpful right now in terms of this, this, bringing this plan forward may give us a little bit more insight, so. It, of course, I, you know, for the applicant, if you don't mind us doing that, I certainly...
No, we are available this Friday night. All right? We can line up.
Okay. Unfortunately, I don't know if I'm going to be available Friday. The members of the board are going to be available.
This is the chairman. I was, I'm glad you brought up the site walk. I was, because Jay hasn't done the staff report and done a full review of the plans, has thrown a lot at you tonight, I thought it would be, make a lot of sense to have a site walk between now and the next meeting. We do have to accommodate the spooky world, the ongoing spooky world, so it might be like a Tuesday afternoon or something, something to that effect. But I thought that would make a lot of sense, and we, we, we can parcel out the, the detailed discussion, you know, per use, the laser tag, the Christmas light show, and we can break that up. But I thought it'd make a lot of sense to have a site walk, schedule this for next time, let Jay do his full review. We have had really good comments coming from Lou Karen, the town, and Jay, and we went through those in the meeting yesterday. Tonight, I received a letter from Attorney Hollis. I haven't had a chance to look at it, all right, but we will read through it and respond to that as well, so. We, in all honesty, we weren't, we weren't expecting approval tonight. How's that?
Well, I don't think you would have gotten it, but, just being honest.
We know this is going to take a couple meetings. We wanted to introduce him to the board and work through this with you. And fortunately, unlike in years past, we have no hard deadline to, you know, this, we're expecting these new pieces of the Mel's Park to come online sometime in 2022, so we have, we have time to work through this with you.
I know Attorney Hollis and Mr. Charbonneau are here this evening. I see them in the gallery. You gentlemen, I know, I did receive your letter, Attorney Hollis, today. I did read it fully, and I believe other members of the board also received it as well. Did you want to make some comments this evening, redressing your letter, or do you want to defer, or how do you want to proceed?
I'd like to make a few brief comments.
Okay.
Sort of serve as an introduction.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney at Goddessman &amp; Hollis in Nashua, 39 East Pearl Street, and I'm representing both Richard Charbonneau and Jill Charbonneau as trustees of their respective trusts, two different properties that have bought this on two different sides. As you know, we've sort of been involved in the process in the past and will continue to be involved in the future. As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, I wrote a letter to you and to the members of the board today. We received the final plan on Friday, as did the town, and so spent some time reviewing it, trying to go through it, and I didn't know how it would proceed this evening, so I wanted to make sure our objections were sort of noted on record. I did talk to Andy earlier. I thought I sent him a copy. It turns out I did not. I guess you got your copy, but anyway, I apologized to him, but I think in light of where we're proceeding, I don't need to go into the detail. I just wanted to say that, first of all, Mr. and Mrs. Charbonneau appreciate that this is a comprehensive plan. There still may be a few things missing, which we'll all get to, and I think my, my letter will allow them to hear our comments early on in the stage. The second thing is, both Mr. and Mrs. Charbonneau like the fact that there's no deadline, that we can work through it. that there's no deadline, that we can work through it and applaud the applicant really for, uh, additional onsite parking, uh, because that's one of the items that necessary. The key issue in this onsite parking is, does it work? It's like every onsite parking that you have to review and your staff and your engineers. And I guess the number one issue I would like the board to consider tonight is, uh, and maybe give a, give a, uh, indication to the applicant is, we think that there should be a traffic analysis. There should be a traffic study and analysis done. You've got a lot of working parts, a lot of different uses. We're moving from what was a, really the traffic, the traffic generator was a four to six week. I, I mean, it was originally a two week, then it grew to three week, and now it's somewhere probably off and on between four and six weeks, depending on weather and holiday. But it, it is an amazing man and it's a traffic generator. And I know the chairman, last time the immediate traffic impact is particularly used, uh, of the site. But I think we have a lot of things going on in the site plan and I would urge the board to consider requesting, you know, acquiring a traffic impact analysis, both for the, uh, the way people are going to park and access. It's going to be used, the, the temporary use is now morphing into September and a September through January 1, that site, without any fresh look. As I say, they're very good, but- People are going to walk around and meanwhile driving the winter lights traffic up through that parking space where they're going to queue up. I don't know how many cars can queue as they get ready to go down. Clearly not a paved space, clearly during a season of, um, well, up north it's mud season and a lot of places close. So you're going to have some issues there of queuing and access. And then they come out at the other side where there are already our parking spaces, which will have to be blocked off where the access comes out. Um, you've got people, a proposal to park across the street on a parking area, walking across. And as we've heard tonight with, um, police detail, uh, I don't know if they're going to be lights. I don't know if they're, you know, how that'll be functioning. But again, you're talking about perhaps up to 150 parked cars crossing the street at one area. You've got people coming down from the north end. They're not parking in that lot they used to, but they're still parking up on the streets up there, walking down. And I think, uh, as my client tells me, I have not observed, but, uh, people are parking in the, um, overflow parking lot and now, and they've discovered that if they park near the front on Charles Bancroft Highway, they don't have to go up in the back and walk down the dedicated, um, dirt paths, uh, stone dust paths, which were so important to the previous plan. How do you get pedestrians from that cornfield down into the site? What they're doing is moving towards Charles Bancroft and now walking along the edge of Charles Bancroft where there's of course no sidewalks or lights or anything else. So I think for all those reasons, a traffic analysis and a pedestrian safety analysis should be done. But that's, that's really my key point this evening because I think the rest of my, uh, concerns are raised in a letter. I, I intended as a sort of a constructive point of discussion for the applicant. I was glad to hear they weren't trying to get approval. And so, uh, I, I have some other questions, but again, I can raise those to the applicant and hopefully they'll be taken care of outside of the planning board or by, by the time they come back here. Um, so that's sort of my comments. Um, I, I would highlight that another thing that is of some concern to us and should be to you is, um, because of this expanded temporary use, are we, um, I, I think the planning board ought to look at whether porta potties is the appropriate, uh, inadequate, um, facility for the number of people that are going to be coming to this site, site over a duration of three months. And, uh, and ask you to consider that. Uh, and then the final, uh, point I would make, and again, it's really up to the planning board, but, uh, we of course believe that, um, lot 14 is being used as onsite parking. We raised this with the prior onsite parking, but it had been pre-existing. And so, uh, we did not appeal any decision because none was made. Um, however, in this instance, uh, this, in our opinion, onsite parking on a lot by itself is a separate and distinct use. This lot is not, unlike the cornfield, what I call the cornfield lot, which got subdivided and attached by, um, approvals to the Mel's site. This is across the street. It's not owned by the same people. It's not, it is not immediately adjacent. So what you have is a separate lot with a distinct use as overflow parking. Now, under the zoning ordinance, there's no such use allowed anywhere in town. They can't buy a lot and pave it and put up a parking lot. Uh, it has to be associated with the use. So we believe it's our position that this proposed use, uh, is not permitted under the zoning ordinance. And you may want to refer that to whoever decides that in this town at this moment. Uh, and if it's not you, someone else, if it is you or if no one else makes the decision, I would say that when you vote on this, you will be deciding that. Um, and it just might be more efficient if you all decide to refer it to whoever has to make that decision early on. And if they have to get a variance, they go through that process. Um, so those, those are my preliminary comments. I don't need to regurgitate everything in my life. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
The only other thing is the, the original site plan, there was a sidewalk that was supposed to be built that got built, never had an, an entrance point onto 3A. I don't know if any, I asked you at the last meeting if, if, if anybody had a chance, if they could look at it to see how they left it. And the only reason why I shut it off is because of the way they left it ending. We, we have told them through their attorney, uh, Morgan's relayed to their attorney, that we would allow them to build a sidewalk. I would give them an easement to build a sidewalk along 3A as long as it was on the edge of the right way. And that was part of the original site plan review that that was a condition that they had to, that sidewalk had to be done. Now the sidewalk's gone and they didn't talk about the sidewalk at all tonight. But if they're going to, there's going to be a sidewalk, it needs to be handicap accessible to the end of it, not just end it in the middle of the property. Because I have a liability as the property owner now for that sidewalk just to end the way it does. And that's why I had to block it off because, for that reason. So that still needs to be addressed because that is part of the original site plan approval.
Yeah, if there's an amendment, in other words, and they're not proposing the sidewalk, it has to come out, come off, um, the prior approval. You will have to deal with that one way or another. And so it's good that we're on the record, we're okay with it, but it has to change in its location and design. And you would want to see that designed in detail, I think. Uh, you also may want to, if you, if you don't do a traffic study, we would urge you to look at the issue of how, how are people getting from the current parking lot to the site? You know, and the people, if you drove by there in the summertime, the people that go to Mills during the summertime are walking down the same, they're walking down the drive aisles to get from one facility to the other. So there's, there's people walking down the drive aisles and there's cars driving in and out. That's why we're requesting that somebody do a traffic study and a pedestrian traffic study so that you can see what that is. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. Attorney Pearlman, did you just want to?
No, I don't, excuse me, I'm not, I'm not prepared to answer, um, these things, but you know, you, you know, we will as we go through this process.
And I'm sure once you get, uh, obviously he said, yeah, you'd ever received his letter or Attorney Hollis's letter. So maybe you give an opportunity to do that and, and see their concerns. Okay. Um, so I guess the, um, well, before I do that, I know, I do have a letter from Lou Karen. Lou Karen is here this evening. Good evening. Yeah, our, our town engineer, um, um, as well as our building inspector is here as well. Um, and I know you submitted a letter to the board. Um, is there anything that you want to address in, in the letter this evening? Or do you want to wait? Or how do you want to?
No, all the, the comments I had from my September letter on the first planned submission were all addressed, every single one of them.
Okay.
We had a little back and forth on drainage issues that have been resolved to my satisfaction to some calculations needed to verify that water wouldn't be back flowing out of catch basins here and there.
And I do have that letter. So this is, I mean, for the record, um, Lou Karen is here. So we have the letter and-
So from an engineering standpoint of what they have proposed for their changes, I don't have issues with it.
Okay. All right. Um, I did see that you do have two waivers, one for parking and I think one for traffic impact. Okay. Um, so just, I think the board, I mean, the members of the planning board have that as well, uh, copies of that. Um, okay. So is there any, um, well, before I even do that, is there any questions from the board? Um, anything that they want to add or?
I just have a general question. I can't find it in regs, but it, it's currently a hayride in the fall, right? Uh, and I might need help with this, but, and it may not be applicable, but are you allowed to drive cars on a hayride on private property? Or is this class one through six kind of roads or public roads? I don't understand how that works. What's a class six road? We have somebody, a specialist in the background there. You know how it's like highways, you know, you have a, well, the, so is this a problem? Are they allowed to drive the cars on the dirt on their property? Okay. All right. That was my first question, or I didn't know why we were here. I don't know. Okay. Very good. That was my, my main first question. I have a lot of questions, but that was one of them.
Okay. Um, so do we want to schedule a, um, well, even before I get to that, is there any other members of the public here this evening wish to make any comments to the board? Should open it up. So I'll open up the public comment at this time. I know we heard from Mr. Charbonneau and Attorney Hollis, um, but anyone else? Okay. Um, at this time I will close public input. Um, so I wanted to bring it back to the board. Do you guys, Wendy, would you like to do a site walk? And I guess I should ask the applicant when, are you available, uh, to do that? Certainly.
It's, um, that goes to Mr. Caulfield.
Okay.
Because he's got the spooky world scheduled, so.
Okay.
We're not going to do it on a weekend. Saturday morning?
Sure, we can do it on Saturday morning. Yeah, sure.
You want to do it this, this Saturday?
We, we, yeah, it's Saturday. It's fine.
Long weekend.
Yeah, I know.
Because we do work, you know, very, very, very late. So we were requested, that's okay?
Um, did you want, do you want to do it like at eight o'clock in the morning?
No, you want to do it like 11?
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're up late.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see. Got it. Sorry.
It doesn't sound like this Saturday because it's-
No.
Maybe the following Saturday?
The 16th.
October 16th?
Yep.
At 11?
11 o'clock. Does that work for you guys?
I think so. What time did they say? 11?
11 AM on the 16th of October.
Meet at, meet at the arcade?
Meet at the arcade.
Red building?
Sure. Okay.
That's great. Thank you.
So-
Can I, can I add one more thing? I'm sorry about that. It's, it's, noon is better for us, if that's okay with you. Is that okay, noon?
Does that work for everybody?
Sorry.
It's, it's fine with me.
Yeah, it's fine with me too. So-
Okay, great.
Noon time.
Thank you.
16th.
Rainbow shine, right?
October 16th, noon time. Um, we're going to have a site walk, um, from Mills Funway Park. Um, we will notify Butters and, um, yeah, obviously, and, um, we will do that. Um, they'll also give an opportunity for Jay, I think, to review more and get a deeper dive into your, um, your plans substantively and-
Yes.
And also for, uh, Attorney Pearlman to review Attorney Hollis's letter and, uh, to address any concerns there as well. Okay. Um-
So when we come back, Mr. Chairman, I can interrupt, but we will, we'll present these kind of one at a time.
I think that would probably be best.
Right.
So maybe you're going to do for the, are you going to go in the order that you have them here on-
That, that may make sense. And then, yeah, and then we'll call out the corresponding notes that go with each portion of, of the plan.
Okay. So the first one is a proposed paid parking lot expansion on map 20 lot 17. So are you just going to address that? Or do you want to address another one?
Well, yeah, we can knock off, you know, we, half of them and then, and then the, the next, you know, can finish it up the next meeting.
Okay. So why don't we do this? Why don't you, at the next meeting, address the proposed paid parking lot expansion on map 20 lot 17 and the proposed grass parking area on map 20, uh, map 20 lot 17 to be used as overflow parking.
Okay, we could probably go further than that. Yeah, the corporate can get put in on that as well. Corporate parking.
Yep. And yeah, you can put in the corporate events during, yeah. So those three, um, more parking ones. All right. So what, it would be A, B, C, and D. So, because they're all addressed parking. So I would do those, those ones first.
So that works.
And then we can do the other ones because those are sort of separate. Yeah. Okay. Does that sound good to the board?
It's fine.
That works for everybody? Okay.
So the next meeting is the 19th?
Next meeting is the 19th.
Do we have?
Just a work lesson.
We do have a workshop, we are doing workshops during that time period. That's right. Um,
Okay, going into zoning?
Yeah. Um, so I mean, the other, the, the other option is, um, November 2nd, which is a Tuesday.
Well, it's election day. Do you do?
There's no elections.
City folk.
Oh, you live in the city. Well, you're out of luck then.
Frank, and Mr. Chairman, we were expecting, uh, November 2nd.
Okay. So the next meeting, uh, we'll continue this hearing to, um, November 2nd at 7:00 PM to address, uh, letters A through D in the project narrative for this project. And that'll also address, I think, some of the waiver requests as well. So at that meeting. Okay.
You have to, you have to vote on-
Yes, I do. So I guess, um, I'd entertain a motion to continue the hearing to November 2nd at 7:00 PM. So, yeah. All right, I have a second. Discussion. All those signify to the continuance, uh, to November 2nd. Say signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes 400. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Your time.
We're red socks.
I did a lot of work, huh?
Yes. All right. Next item of business is, um, committee reports.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Are there any reports for many committees? I guess we'll start with you, Ken.
You'll start with me. Uh, Board of Selectment is, um, working on their budget reviews. Uh, the next meeting for the Board of Selectment will be Monday, October 11th, 6:30 PM here at the Town Hall. Um, NRPC did have its commissioner meeting. Um, I'm trying to think of when, but I think, uh, last month because we're already, we're into October now. I will give a report on that at our next meeting. There was a lot there, but, uh, I'll, I'll wait till next meeting for that. Uh, we do have an NRPC commissioner opening. Um, and there's a candidate that may apply. Um, and I'll just leave that like that.
Okay. All right. Uh, I did also attend that meeting of NRPC. That was at the Nashua City Hall. Um, the Conservation Mission is meeting tomorrow at 7 o'clock here in Town Hall.
Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry, Thursday.
Thursday at the fire station.
Oh, it's at the fire station? Well, okay.
Good thing Joe is here.
Yeah, I know. Jesus.
6:30, 6:30 too.
Oh, isn't it 6:30? I'll just go home, okay? You want to run the meeting? Okay, so let's erase the rest of what I just said. The Conservation Commission meeting is at 6:30, it's at the fire station. Thursday night, okay, we got that one. Let's see. The CIP Committee met last night at seven, at 6:00, 6:15 actually, because we didn't start till 6:15. So we had our first meeting since April, so we're starting that up again. It went well, so we're gonna be looking at some different stuff. And the Lower Merrimack Local River Advisory Committee did not have any projects, so we didn't have a meeting for that. So, the next meeting will probably be determined by the Chair, I think, but I should get notice of that if something happens or comes up. Okay, and that's it on that.
You do have a letter from New Hampshire DOT.
We do.
Regarding transportation projects between 2023 and 2032.
Okay. All right. Okay, so I'll just read it into the record here. This is from DOT Bureau of Planning and Community Assistance, to whom it may concern. We are sending the enclosed notice to your organization in an effort to encourage your participation to speak up about transportation projects planned for 2023, 2032 throughout the state of New Hampshire. We believe that your organization can benefit from your being involved in this discussion. Attaches a listing of all dates, times, and locations of public hearings planned throughout New Hampshire to discuss the state of New Hampshire transportation tenure plan. In order to develop the best transportation solutions for all communities, our department wants to hear from you. Your history and success show that the best transportation projects evolve as a result of close cooperation between planners, designers, and policymakers and the residents, business owners, and interest groups who know and care about their community's needs. These hearings are being hosted by the Department of Transportation and your executive counselor. We invite you, your residents, and communities to actively participate in this hearing. Our goal is to hear from you on what your transportation needs are. If you have any questions regarding these meetings or a scope of planning projects in your area, please contact me at 603-271-3344. Sincerely, William E. Watson, Jr., Professional Engineer, Administrator. Okay.
Is that under the NRPC purview?
I don't know, Jay, do you know anything about that? Obviously, it's the 10-year plan, so.
Yeah, these, these are the public hearings, so the, the process has been so far that DOT has submitted their draft of the 10-year plan to the GASS committee. And so now that's, you know, under review, it's in their hands. We did have a presentation from, or I should say, a public hearing that Counselor Wheeler sponsored in Merrimack last week. But there will be some additional public hearings. There's also an opportunity to provide input by letter, online. And, you know, in addition, there's a survey out that they would love people to participate in as well.
Okay.
And it was, probably the biggest issues affecting our region in the current draft. One, there is a three-year delay in the widening of the turnpike in Merrimack and the work on the tolls, and that's mainly due to, not surprisingly, a shortfall in toll revenue. Fewer people have been driving during the pandemic. And so that's had an impact. For those who follow it at all, the, what's called the Hudson Boulevard, which was the southern half of the Circumfederal Highway in Merrimack. There was really no funding in that, but that was in the last draft of the 10-year plan. That's been pulled out of the 10-year plan in this draft. And then there are improvements, there's additional funding for our safety improvements on 101. Those are really the big ones, that impact this region.
Okay. Thank you. Approval of the September 21, 2021 minutes. Did everyone have an opportunity to take a look at those and have any questions or concerns?
Looked fine to me.
Yeah, I didn't see anything. Well, you, Kim, did you see?
Oh, looked good, okay.
All right, then I'll attend a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a discussion. All those in favor of the approval of the September 21st, 2021 minutes, please signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes 400. Okay, any other business? I think I asked Joan to send out a copy of the budget for the planning board. Do you have copies of that?
Yes, I do.
Why don't you take a look at that for a minute? As you know, we are in budget season, and the Budget Committee is beginning to review the town's budget. And I thought it would be a good idea that maybe take an opportunity to, unfortunately Kate isn't here, but she did send me an email about the hearing on Thursday. May have to move that, because I'm not gonna be available to meet with them, so. Is there anything, Joe, I should ask you, and you're more in tune with this. Does Troy have any suggestions? Did he, has he been talking with the Budget Committee about the planning board's budget? What, they looking to cut anything or affect anything?
I don't think it's gone to the Budget Committee yet, has it?
Well, it's going to, I think it's going to.
Thursday?
Yeah. And I don't know if Troy has.
I think he plugged the numbers in.
Yeah. Okay.
I haven't heard anything.
Okay. All right, I just didn't know if there was anything that, you know, I wanted the opportunity for you guys to review it and then take a look at it and see if there's anything might want to change or.
Looks like public notices went up, right? The postage went up, right?
Yeah.
That's the big one, right?
That's, yeah, that was, that's because of the.
But that doesn't come out of our budget, the public notices, because the applicant pays separately, yeah.
So why did it go up so much? Is it for?
Oh, public notices?
Yeah.
That would be the newspaper notices.
The newspaper fee, okay.
And now we're doing that, RSA changed, you can, you can put it on the front page of your, of your website, you don't have to put it in the paper.
That's great.
Yeah.
So we've been doing that.
Obviously, I don't know what the, you know, what the Budget Committee is gonna decide what they want to do or not, but I just, you know, figured that give you guys an opportunity to take a look at it. And I know, I think Kate said that she would be back for their next meeting, so I may talk to her. See what she has to say, because I think she has more of an insight into that, obviously, because she's on the committee. So, but Joan, if you could, you know, maybe reach out to Troy and see if there's anything, if he wants to send me an email or something. If you're to, to do so or call me. And that's all I have. Joan, do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Jay, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay.
I, I do.
Ah, no, but Karen does.
So like, to entertain Jay's input on this thing regarding the traffic, possible traffic study for Mel's, if they, if they were gonna do one, now is the time for them to get existing counts. Doesn't seem like they need one for normal, routine, day-to-day operations of the golf course, the go-kart, and the basketball and things like that, that's been ongoing for many, many, many years. Spooky World, obviously, is the big attraction, which has conflicts with, again, crossing Route 3A, but if you're gonna have a police detail out there, that sort of takes care of that issue as far as getting across the highway, from my perspective. But there's just so many different activities going on. I, I don't know, do you have spooky world traffic data from other states? But if they did a count, again, I have a two-for-one weekend, is that already gone by?
That's gone by, yeah.
That's gone by.
That was the big one, yeah.
That was the big one. I don't know.
Doing counts, I think, is a good idea, from my perspective, and frankly, even though the two-for-one might have gone by, you know, I would have to think that crowds are only gonna grow as we get closer to Halloween.
They can tell by ticket sales, can't they?
Yeah.
Can't they tell by ticket sales or?
Yeah, the thing with spooky world, I don't, I haven't been there, so the process, people get out of their car and park somewhere, and then get in the haywagon and ride around through the woods and get.
Well, or go to the haunts and then do the hayride, so there's separate things.
Those haunts are pretty disgusting.
Are you, are you counting people or cars or both?
Well, you got two issues. You got traffic coming and going. You have internal circulation, and if most of them are remote in the field to the south and across the street, then, you know, it's, the internal circulation of the cars is controlled by attendance. They just need the staff to direct people, that's probably not an issue. Getting from the parking lots to where the features are is, if they actually have a nice path along the back, you know, parallel to the river, then they're not in a conflict with traffic on 3A. As far as routine, day-to-day pedestrian traffic, there's nothing different from what I see at spooky world that's any different than DeMullers or Hanaford Parking Lot, where, you know, you gotta watch out where you're going when you're walking to and from your car to the store. There's no sidewalks, you do, you park, and, you know, you be careful, and, you know, most of your fender-bender accidents probably happen in these parking lots.
Right.
It's the way it goes. But for spooky world, it is a little bit different. The, the new parking, Jay, would you say the intention there is to supplement what they need on a day-to-day basis?
I, I would say yes, but also, and this is something I think we want some, you know, conversation around, they are adding activities as well. So I would think, yes, it's, it's to better accommodate the parking demand that they already have. And there was an overflow lot that they removed from the site plan. But, yeah, I mean, and again, how much it is, it's, it's kind of back to that point of like trying to wrap my brain around all these different uses. So as an example, does the addition of laser tag draw more people? Or is it really just people who have already been there or are engaged in that activity? Seems to me like a distinct activity, but I don't really know. But, yeah, that, I mean, that's, that's why I says, I think it's both.
Yeah, the, the laser tag is, is certainly a low volume, because, you know, you have teams of people that get out and they have to show up to even get a team. And, you know, you may be talking a dozen people at a time, and they're gonna be out there for 45 minutes or an hour running around the woods and getting lost, and, and then they leave. I, I think that'll die, frankly. I, I can't imagine mosquitoes out there chewing you left and right. I don't get it. I mean, inside the building is one thing, but, and I've done the laser tag and hooks it, and that was kind of fun. You know, you go with family in a group and, but being out there in the woods, it's not paintball. That's what I thought it was at first, but laser tag, I don't know, you probably got some hardcore groups gonna do it, but mom and pop is not gonna take their seven-year-olds out there playing laser tag with mosquitoes flying everywhere, the wetlands they have there. So I, I don't see the laser tag thing as a big attraction. I really don't. I think it's very limited.
I mean, I think you've got some distinct sets of things. You've got the regular stuff that's going on at Mel's, and there's a couple of changes proposed to that, laser tag being one, you know, birthday tent, et cetera. Those aren't significant. Spooky World, you know, stays spooky world. Probably the other biggest change on this is adding the kind of holiday seasonal stuff, the light show, which is definitely a new activity, and, you know, the Christmas tree sales, that's probably not a huge volume, that's people in and out. So definitely, you're, you're not seeing all these activities happening at the same time. I think basically you've got that kind of seasonal Halloween is gonna then, you know, go into Christmas season. And then it ends. And it's probably, I'm assuming, you know, that it's also a lower volume to do something like the holiday light show than it would be spooky world.
But in the wintertime, when they're doing the light show, the golf courses close down, the go-karts close down.
That's right.
A lot of stuff's closed down, and people don't get out of their car. I went to the New Hampshire Motor Speedway last year. I like lights. I like flashing lights and stuff.
The light show.
And there was no issue. I mean, you drive in, pay 15 bucks, whatever, $30, whatever it was for a car, and of course, they had these wide pavements, so if you wanted to stop at a particular exhibit, there was no issue with that at all, because there's plenty of room for cars to get by. Not the case here. You're gonna have a stream of cars. We never get out of the car. You just pay, you know, roll the window down, give the guy your money, and you drive through. Take all the time you want. There was no condition on how much time. This one here, because it's a single track, there'll be some kind of a control, because, you know, people stop and you got a whole queue behind you, but people never get out of the car, so it's not a pedestrian issue, except where the Christmas tree sale is gonna take place, and, you know, is anybody gonna get out of the car to use a portie-potty? I doubt it, they're gonna drive home. So I don't see the winter thing as being a big deal. They don't need parking for that. And they're not gonna have any more cars than they have for spooky world. So I'm not sure what a traffic study would really generate.
Do you think there'd be a lot of people going into the light show, though? I mean, to the Christmas light show?
Yeah, they, they just would queue up. Unlike the Motor Speedway, where they had, again, 50 feet of pavement width, so you had five lanes of traffic going through there. And, you know, a number of cars could stop anywhere in front of an exhibit, which I did numerous times. But you're not gonna be able to do that here, because it's a single track. So, but they just queue up, and the worst thing could happen is that they're gonna end up queuing across the entire field, the new parking lot, they're gonna wrap around the laser building into the existing parking lot and come in from a north entrance instead of in front of the laser tag building. If that ever happened, I, I don't know. People tend to come at different times and.
And they have, they have a significant area on site for queuing, but one of the questions that we certainly could ask is whether or not they plan timed tickets. Right now spooky world is timed tickets.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's, of course, COVID, but, you know, that's certainly we could ask.
I think he's, he talked yesterday, Wayne did, about it, and I think it's more than just COVID. I think it's just controlling the crowd. How many people are coming through at once. They have crowd control just by virtue of timed tickets.
Right, they, but they didn't use to. I guess that was the point. COVID triggered that.
But it's working. He liked, I, I got the sense from listening to him that they're gonna keep doing that, because it works for them as well as for the people who are buying tickets, you know, don't end up waiting. But the light show, I, I don't see a humongous demand. I could be wrong, but, again, my experience at the Speedway, it was, you know, a constant trickle of cars that came through, but there was never queue. I never had to, I never, I wasn't there that much, but the little time I was there, there was no one was queuing up. It was after dinner, so it was kind of a popular time, 7:30, 8:00.
Yeah. They have the restaurant there, so that could be a little bit of a collision, right? Restaurants open late. And then, they might start decorating their existing buildings and stuff, which I would understand, and then maybe people want to go out and get pictures. It might turn into that.
Right, yeah.
Because it's gonna be cute. I'm sure they're gonna do it up really nice, you know?
I'm just trying to think of what a traffic study would get you.
Pedestrian, I think, is more, you know?
Again, being out there, I haven't seen a problem. Been out there many times, doing site visits and things, middle of the afternoon, in the summertime.
I mean, I think to that point, spooky world is the highest traffic generator.
Sure.
And they aren't proposing really changes to spooky world. The other changes that they're proposing, I would think, are all gonna be lower generators.
Yeah. Yeah, even a corporate event, they're all gonna come in and they're gonna park in the grass if they, if they don't have enough room in the pavement. And I'm not sure how many of those are gonna get.
Do they do those in the winter, the corporate events?
Yeah, it would depend on weather. It's all outdoor activity, you know? You, you wanna go play miniature golf and ride a go-kart, and you take a family event.
Dress warm.
Do they, they have the go-karts ongoing?
Might want to, might use the bumper pool, but.
I'm just saying, why don't they use the parking in general? Get them over there.
Yes, a lot of this is weather, weather-related. I don't think I'd want to do a hayride in the rain either.
They have an arcade or something in there also, don't they? Don't they have one building?
Yeah, they have the arcade.
For the kids.
Well, certainly a lot of stuff to think about. Well, certainly a lot of stuff to think about. Very true. Okay. I have no other business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved second.
All right, a motion second to any discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes 400. Thank you for joining us this evening. And we'll see you again on the 19th. Happy, well, I guess Columbus Day for some and Indigenous Peoples' Day for others. So but have a great holiday.